We're going to open up the finance subcommittee meeting. We'll start off with, does anybody have any questions on review of invoices? The amount of $536,000.
I'm good.
Anybody? Everybody all set?
Well, I don't know if it's a question. I know they're different. They're on different pages, but the, I guess the snow removal, that those are two different months, correct? Or two different times for snow removal?
The vendor?
Go ahead Lynn.
What's the vendor you're speaking of?
I think it's Two Labs you must be talking about. It's just.
Two Labs, two.
Yeah, one fee split into two payments every year.
So that is, that was part of the RFP that went out for the maintenance contract at East Haven High School. And the plowing is currently done by the same vendor that does the maintenance. Different business names, Two Labs, and the payment is split over two parts for a total of $11,000 for the year.
Okay, so, so here's my real question then. So there's, there's one for a date of 11/23 and the other date is for 12/11. So I just want to just be clear that I'm looking at that correctly. 12/23.
Has this happened yet?
Met 11/23 and I apologize for that.
It's a set yearly fee that's just split paid within over two month period.
Okay, one is on this, on the, the over $7,000 thing, okay? And then the other one is.
They shouldn't be, they're equal amount.
There are two different dates and I just want to share that one date, the 11/23 snow removal is 5,500 and the 11, the 12/11 is 11,000. So I'm just curious.
Purchase order is for $11,000, split into two payments of $5,500. One in December and one in January.
You're looking at the total amount at 11?
Yes.
So Tia, the total PO is $11,000, right? That's why the PO is in the over $7,000 section?
Yes, but I guess the reason is they put a date with one and not the other and it just didn't really make sense to me, but that's okay. You know, as long as you guys know what it says there, because it looks like there are two dates, two times that we pay them.
We do. We pay them twice. We split it in half.
Okay, if, if, if Tom didn't see this, and I'm not being fresh when I say this, Tom, you probably would have picked this up if, if I was incorrect. So, I mean, I'm fine if everybody understands my question. I don't know that I'm explaining it right, but that's okay. I can, if you look on page, page 30, it's got the Two Labs and it has a date of 11/23. And it has a price with 5,500. And then, when you go and look at, and it states about before and after, and then it also states a new date, 12/11, and, and that's on the purchase orders over $7,000, whatever. So that's, so do, I think you could understand why I'm confused. I'm good to go.
Yeah, you, okay, you referenced page 23. Are you talking on the voucher detail listing, the invoices?
She meant page 30, I believe.
I said page, I believe I said page 30 first.
30, okay.
Third, not 31, 30, 30. And that's where it says, that's on the invoices, you know, on the, the purchase, whatever. When you flip through all the 33 pages, page 30 has the first one.
Yep.
It's just unclear. It looked like they were going to be in there twice and, and paid twice per, per snowstorm or something. That's all it looked like to me, because the dates are different. So that's why I didn't understand it.
So the PO over 7,000 was for the total, which is 11,000? And then the invoices reflect the two payments, one of 5,500 and the other one of a 5,500.
I guess the other one isn't reflected in the invoices because it's not after the new year. So that's probably why I'm confused. Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to.
Yeah, it was in the, it's worded in the contract, I think, to be over two installments. So I think we, I don't know, well, next time we'll know if that's something we want to change or keep or.
I just think they use different dates. That's what confused me.
All right, any other questions on the invoices? All right, POs for over 7,000? All right, what about the budget transfers? Anybody?
No, I, I mean, I, they're clearly where they went, right here, so.
I got a couple of questions on the transfers. So, if I saw that right, there's $50,000 going into the coaching stipends?
That was something that we under budgeted this year, knowing that we would have funds in, in salary lines that could make up for it, because we got a zero increase this year. We may end up not needing them, but contractually, we had to have the funds in the system for it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why, you know, those stipends are pretty defined and they don't change much. I don't understand why we would underfund that in our budget. It's almost a guarantee, that's what they're going to be.
It's just what we did last year when we had to make the cuts.
That's true. I think for this year, when we put together the 21-22 budget, we know contractually what those stipends are and we should adequately reflect it in the salary line.
It has to be, it has to be exact to the best of our knowledge. And if, if you think you're going to have extra in the other place, then cut that when you're, when you don't have enough funds. You know what I'm saying? The same thing, I noticed in there, the, the district sewer assessment. That should be pretty predictable also.
It was not due to the fact that we had an issue with a leak in the water system the prior year. We find out that, we, we inquired as to why it was so high and they said it was because of the leak that we had, where we had a lot of water going through. And it, they charge you this year for what happened last year. So we'll, we'll get a huge cut in next year's budget for that.
I know, but don't, don't forget, that sewer assessment's based on water use.
There was a leak at the high school in the previous year that caused that.
I know, but did we detect that leak?
We did eventually, yes.
Yeah, well, well, the, the water bills, you have to stay on, because that affects that. Now, that sewer assessment is a quarterly thing, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, and it, it's trouble. When you let your water bill run away, the next year you get swaddered and you.
That is exactly what happened.
Yeah, you can't do that. You got to watch that water bill like a hawk, because that comes monthly, right? Or is that quarterly too?
No, they come monthly now.
Monthly, yeah, so you got to watch that like crazy and it has to be within reasonable or you gotta, you gotta investigate it.
I remember there were questions, Tom. It might even have been from you, why the water bill was so high in certain ones. And I think that's how we ended up investigating.
Yeah.
That's how we found it.
Yeah.
But with that water rectified, and if you're monitoring the bills effectively between now and the end of the school year, the sewer assessment should accurately reflect what should be budgeted for in 21-22.
Correct.
Do you ever think of fighting that?
We can. It's, it's not easy, but we can.
Yeah, I don't know, it might be worth it. That's a, that's a lot of money for, and think about it, the water didn't go down the sewer, I don't think.
It did, it did.
It did, yeah.
It was the chillers. When someone had serviced the chillers, they didn't turn off the water.
Yeah.
And it ran, it ran.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't hold the person who serviced the chillers liable at all? They don't have any type of insurance?
I don't know. I can look into that.
I think that would be a really good start.
That's all I have. Anybody else got any questions? All right. What's next? Health insurance report?
Health insurance is currently running a little higher than anticipated. And our amounts have gone down. Our sweep account balance is down to 643,000, but that was as of November. We have significant deposits going in in December that should bring it back into alignment for the year.
All right.
So Lynn, if we're looking at the report accurately, total costs through the end of November are about $3,371,464.
Yes.
And total, in terms of claims and fees and commissions, and payments to the fund have totaled $4,650,498.
No, no, it's 2.841.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
2.8 million, yeah. The, the bottom.
$841.275 for a difference of the 637,146 or the 643,290.
The difference is 53189 in the blue.
Okay. So that's the difference between the paid year-to-date and the total costs to date.
Correct.
Okay.
In December, it turns around, quite a large deposit was made.
All right. What's next? Funds for Ferrara Playground?
Yes, so I have Mr. D. Bernardo on. And Erica had requested putting the agenda item on the agenda. Mr. D. Bernardo has been working with his PTO and his school community on a layout and a potential model for the playground. So at this time, I can invite him to explain what that is and the rationale relative to the developmental level of the kids at Ferrara School, and then ask the board for discussion and their consideration in financially supporting this request. Mr. D. Bernardo?
Thank you, Erica. Yeah, thanks for having me tonight. I'll just give you a brief little history of how we are at this point. A few summers ago, our playscape on the playground was removed for being unsafe. I don't know if anyone ever had a chance to see it. It was the old pressure-treated ones. And it was very deteriorated and students would get splinters if they go on it. And it was a constant, you know, battling, or if the kids wanted to go on it. And it just got to a point where it just really wasn't fit for the kids to play on it. So it was removed and rightfully so. When I came back after the summer, it was removed, I approached my PTA and we started looking at our options. We contacted some vendors. We even had a few come out to the school, looking at pricing and availability and the space, and it's a beautiful space for a playground. You know, age appropriateness and materials and things of that nature. And after shopping around and meeting with the vendors, we came up with a target goal for fundraising of somewhere in the vicinity of $70,000 seemed reasonable. And even at $70,000, depending upon what bells and whistles and options you want, it could still be a relatively, believe it or not, a modest playground. But for $70,000, you'd get something that was functional. And one of the things that we were concerned about was the amount of kids that it could hold at one time. And so we wanted to get something that would fill the space and would give at least, you know, two classrooms a chance to be playing on it at the same time. So something a little bit larger, like our old one was. So we brainstormed ways to raise money and we started doing some fundraising. And most of it was school-based, Yankee Candle gift wrapping, what have you, the traditional things. And we even reached out to some area businesses. And I believe we're in a stone's throw of having roughly $10,000 that's earmarked for our playground, our playscape. And then, as all of you are very aware of, the pandemic hit and that just halted our fundraising. And, you know, it halted it in terms of both, in both the functionality of it and also the financial aspect of it. You know, as you know, a lot of people are hit hard and how may not be the necessary time to be doing a lot of fundraising and things of that nature. But, you know, the need is still there. And this past summer, I met with my PTA and, you know, all, all being socially distanced and with masks, but we met over a weekend and, you know, and we, on the blacktop, you know, we painted hopscotch and four-square and these things on the playground that the kids could play with. But it's still not a playscape. And, you know, and they're children and they want to play. And I know several of my families, we have shared families with Deer Run. And they love going pick up their little younger brother or their sister, because they go there and they get a chance to go run on Deer Run's new playscape. And, you know, and it's the best thing. And oh, Mr. D., when are we going to get one? And, you know, it's, you know, and, and all of us, and we all work with children, we all know about children. That's why we're in this business. And so, you know, to us, everyone on this screen, I think we're all in agreeance that, yeah, you know what, it would be wonderful for these kids to have, have a playscape. But the reality is that there is a rather large financial, financial obligation that goes along with this. And so it is with that, that I, on behalf of the children and families of Ferrara School, I'm asking the board for some financial help in acquiring our playscape for the students. And with all that is going on, you know, in, in the lives of these kids, man, we could really use some good news and this would be really good news to be able to bring back to them. And if the board could finally find, you know, a, a way to make this happen, it would really bring a lot of joy and happiness to the Ferrarians, what I call my, my, my little Ferrarians. And so I did share with a couple of you what our kind of target is. I don't know if it's included in the packets, Erica. Was there a?
Yep, we did, we did upload it, a picture of it, as well as sort of the preliminary cost. $1,000. Melissa can pull it up if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So just give me one moment.
Looks like it has a capacity of 71 individual.
Yeah.
And I, I also received an email that the Public Works would be willing to assist with the installation. And then we can have an outside consultant certify it for safety and compliance.
That'd be wonderful.
Well, it's just the top one, right? The ones on the side are just recommended as an addition?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're looking at. I can't see your screen.
I'll screen share now, one second.
Yeah, it's the, it's the.
The top.
It's the challenger, it's the challenger 1744. Yeah, that's it, right there. That's it, all right. Roughly, it's roughly 40 by 40, which would, and the space that we have is large. It's larger than the 40 by 40, but we also were just recently fortunate enough to get an eight, an eight-person swing set, which would be in the same space as that. Because I know, no matter where the swing sets are or the playsapes are, you have to have so many feet of mulch or that rubber little turf. But it would all fit within that space.
Erica, just to let you know, Paul as well, I did talk to Chucky and John and they did say, just give them a call when, you know, we're ready for them to help out. They're more than welcome to be a part of it. And they said, they'll just, just give them a call. So if you don't, you call or one of you call or I'll call, you just let me know, okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, I do realize that this may not be, you know, as sophisticated as the Deer Run Playground. You know, because it's a little, it's different, it's different in style and scope. We did have a consultant with Colliers as part of that project who helped coordinate and ensure that we were organizing the project in a systematic manner and getting good value and also making sure that we were going through all the various safety checks along each stage of the way. So, you know, I, I do realize that that is an additional cost, but sometimes it's worth it in the long run for the project to be done of quality in compliance with safety measures.
What was the consulting cost for, just for the consulting cost?
I think it was just under 7,000.
Not that bad.
In the neighborhood of five.
Oh, that's not that bad at all.
The other one was a lot higher, so that's great.
We, we got a very good price.
Bob, I, Bob, you can also attest this. You had said it's not as, you know, maybe, maybe more intricate or more bells and whistles, but it also was, you know, the ADA compliance to it, you know, so that's where the difference lies. I got a couple of calls and parents were asking the same question, why, why wasn't it so elaborate? And so, you know, and I explained to them that there's a difference in the actual setup and everything. Not even just like rules or just like certification-wise, but it's just, it's just the way that they're built is different, everything. Whether it's material, whether it's entries. I'm not sure if you received any phone calls, but they, they were concerned why it was different. But just informants, it's just, that's all you need to do. The difference is the ADA piece.
Paul, are you open to using the consulting firm?
Absolutely.
I mean, I, if they can, you know, help walk through the process.
Absolutely, I am. And it's hard for me to tell who asked that question.
Michelle.
Michelle, thanks, Michelle. Michelle, it's, I'm, I'm 100% open to it. The only, the only thing that, you know, that I would like to see happen, and if we could, you know, and I'm going to look a gift horse in the mouth and all that. And I, you know, I come to you, you know, hat in hand, looking for help. But the one thing I don't want to do is, I don't want things to die in committee. And, you know, next year, we're still having consultants come in and we're talking and we're looking up at the stars and we're scratching our heads, oh, you know, I, I, I want to kind of expedite this. I have some families that have partake, that have partaken in the fundraising in third grade. Their kids are now in fifth grade, getting ready to leave, and there's still no playground for that. There's still no playscape for them. So, you know, I, I would love to be able to break ground in the spring, if I could. I don't know if that's pie in the sky.
Maybe Bob could check with them to see, you know, what their schedule's like, just to see if it's even, you know, a viable option.
All right, Jack, what's up?
Quick question. Looking at that diagram, there was one below it for $42,000. What's the difference, 42,000 versus 63,000? They both said challengers, they both said five to, ages five to 12. I'm just trying to figure out why one was, that one said step-by-step for 42,000. So I'm just asking, what's the difference? Does anybody know?
Think you put it more piece together.
Yeah. Usually, I'm, from what I am able to tell, and I, you know, I've, I've learned a lot more about this than I ever thought I would. You know, with the playgrounds, I'm going to tell you something, and, and it's true. You definitely get what you pay for and oftentimes, you know, things look very similar, but there might be a rock wall that's missing or there might be a bounce beam that's missing or something along those natures. And sometimes it's hard to see just in, in one photo. A lot, like if you go on this site, each one of these playsapes, you have the ability to click around and it gives you like a 3D dimensional view and you go, it's like a bird's eye view of some of them. And you could really see what all the differences are.
I can try to pull it up if you'd like.
That's okay. I'm, I'm good. I, I can see differences as I'm looking again.
Okay.
And listen, Paul, I appreciate your comment on wanting to expedite it and get it done fast. However, we did learn a lot and we understand the magnitude of work, site work, excavating, fencing, material selection for ground cover, the installation, the amount of hours it takes to put together the pieces. This is not a small project, it's a massive project. And I know that you want to break ground and you want to have it ready. But my recommendation would be to get a consultant who can take us through this properly, systematically, so that we don't have to backtrack or fix anything, because that's, those will end up delaying the project significantly. It won't get caught up in committee with, with one consultant. What, what, it, what, it will sort of hold it up are weather-related issues, issues related to soil testing, to excavating, to leveling the ground, other components like that. So, you know, for less than $7,000, bringing on a consultant who can help you do it right and systematically, so you know the day that ribbon gets cut and the kids go on that playground, it is safe and it has been through all of the adequate phases for a very robust installation, I think is money well spent.
Erica, if I may, I agree on the consultant. However, I also think that comparing an ADA compliant playground versus a standardized playground is completely different. I think it is going to take much longer to have a consultant come in and step-by-step. It's going to, it's going to get dragged out. Mamawgan went through this exact process and I can tell you that the town employees, like the email I sent you from the conversation I had with our mayor before today, the town employees did expedite it. They were working there every day and that wasn't even under his watch. And Mayor Kefora did confirm with Public Works that they would have the full crew there, making sure that it was done. And that saved Mamawgan School over $5,000, because the installation fee was $5,000 for our PTO. And at that time, the Board of Ed was not willing to pay anything. If you, I believe you were the assistant superintendent at that time, when I came to the board, asking for these requests, which is why I thought it was paramount to bring this to the board. So I don't, I think at this timing, having gone through the process as a parent, and I did meet with Paul's PTA in the early stages of fundraising and I know how hard and excruciating and how hard they've worked. I don't think that we should continue to put this off. And I think going into it now and you bringing up the consulting, I think what I asked you last month was have everything here. If you felt that having a consultant, you should have had that information tonight with, this is the consultant that you were going to recommend. I don't think it's fair to say that tonight, would say, because this is exactly what I asked about.
It's just a suggestion.
I think, I think it's going to delay it even more. And I think when I asked for this back in November, I think I asked for everything to come forward tonight.
Just a suggestion and a recommendation. I just want to make sure the project gets done in a, in a safe manner.
Right, all of the other projects, like Mamawgan School that got put together from the town and all of the other playgrounds, except for the ADA, the ADA one, that was the one that was put together from the Board of Education. And it took how long? Years?
Erica, who assumed liability for the installation and equipment on that playground?
The town did.
Did they also do the, the site work and the excavation for us as well? Did they also do the, um, the site work and the excavation for us as well at the Mamawgan Playground?
Yes, they laid the footing.
So if a child gets injured on that playground, that's the town's gonna talk? That's gonna be on.
The town, nope, the playground came, it got looked at, it was structurally sound, the same way every single playground, they did the installation. The same way every single playground in our town was done. The same way when it got moved from DC Moore to Overbrook School, it's been done every single time before. And it was never an issue. So to say now, we're gonna spend seven thousand dollars on a consultant to, to tell them to say, yep, this is safe, when we're gonna have the same people install the same playgrounds that they've been installing all along. I, I, I think it's, I think it's something that we're just kind of dragging our feet on.
I like to say something since I put my hand up like five times. Erica, listen, I don't want to go back and forth. I'm not comparing any ADA. I'm explaining, explaining to parents.
Talking about you lately.
Oh, I thought you were. And as for this, no, okay, well, you brought it up. I don't, as for this too, though, I like to, everyone's so happy with all the fundraising. Everyone's timing, everyone's going above and beyond. You have as a parent, I have as a parent. I just think that because too, this was also delayed, no one's going through the proper channels. I love all your, your emphasis. I love everyone's emphasis, but we need to go through the proper channels. I don't know why everyone's going around this. It doesn't have to be like this. Do it the right way. You're right. If you, if you don't think consultants needed, it should have been done the right way, request on the right way, bringing it forward and then it having expectations is not the answer.
Alright, anyone else?
Yeah, well, it's a pretty large space right now. And I'm just wondering, Bob, that firm, and I, I want to see it get done right away too, but do they lay out the whole area to best utilize the space, or is it just the playground equipment?
So Colliers helps with the design. And then we, you know, it was a, it was a lengthy process because we had to, we had, there's a lot to think about, whether it's a regular playground for typical kids or a kid's, uh, playground that's wheelchair accessible, like the one at Deer Run. Um, there were things that we put in place that were never there. Car stops, you know, we're never in front of the playground. Um, to a couple of different access points, um, a wheelchair ramp accessibility from the parking lot to the, to the actual set. The actual playground space. Um, so yeah, there's, there's a lot involved. Um.
I mean, would they be able to help like, you know, architecturally plan like the blacktop base? Do they do that?
Yes, that's what they do. They help design and, and again, that's what Colliers came in and did. They came in and helped design what the layout would be. And then did some cost effectiveness stuff with us as well, so that we, you know, because we needed to cut some corners in places. There were some things we wanted that we couldn't get. It's just, you know, the pie was only, the pie is only so big, so you have to slice it, you know, into so many pieces for everybody.
And, and I'm just curious, do we have to go out to bid, or just because they're below that price, we could just ask them?
They're on the state bid list.
On the state bid list, so we wouldn't waste time.
Creative Playthings is on the state bid list.
So I'm, I'm confused. Now, when you purchase this playground, the company itself doesn't come out and measure the space, because we use WB Mason and they actually came out, laid out the groundwork to make sure that it was fit and adequate in your place. And our playground was much less than this cost. So who's the company that this playground is through?
Creative Playthings.
Okay. Because a standardized playground company for schools actually comes out and they map out your playground area. So I'm, I'm confused how it is. Any, any playground, like professional playground company does that?
I think he said just the playground equipment. It's the whole, um, recreational area.
Your footprint, drainage.
Okay.
That's okay, footprint, drainage.
Okay, you got it.
If you said, um, hall and public works.
And none of this, none of this was thought about? We didn't think about any of this this last month? I, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Saying if you, if you said that last time when you guys did the playground at Mamawgan and I wasn't intimately involved in that, but you said that.
Since been superintendent, I'm not sure if you were a part of all of those meetings that I had.
The public work came out and did the excavating and the draining and they did all the site work before the company came out and surveyed for the installation of the unit.
Yep. And they, and they dug, dug all the holes. They set all the, um, the footings. They let, you know, all of the, all the concrete. They did all the mulching, all of that.
Alright, can I interrupt for a second?
Just say, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I, Tom, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm with you. But the agenda item says funds for Farrar playground. Can we talk about the funds before we talk about all that other stuff? How are we funding this?
Is that what we're supposed to be talking about, right? Where are we gonna get the money? Do we have money somewhere that we can can do this? I mean, I, I'm, I'm a little unsure of that too. And then, then you worry about who, what, when and where, I would think.
So there's, um, in the budget projection we provided last month or at the last meeting. Um, if we, uh, reallocate or transfer some funds from some, um, of our lines that are currently underspent uh, from various locations, we could probably secure the funds as well as, you know, being us a little bit more scrutinizing in some of the other expenditures or putting a freeze on certain areas. Um, some other suggestions that came to me now is to utilize the rental account funds. Um, and then at some point, if the operational budget can reimburse that rental fund. Um, I've asked Bob to assess his, um, line to see if there, if there are any funds left over from the, uh, Medicaid li- line that he used for the Deer Run Playground. Um, and then, you know, we'll open up to any other suggestions that the board may have relative to funding.
Alright, I have a suggestion. I don't think, I agree with Paul. Fundraisers are for a specific purpose in a timeframe. That fundraising two years ago for a swing set that's gonna happen when your kid is out of school, I don't think that's right. I think the board of ed should pay for this whole project. We have plenty of funds this year. As you can see, we just transferred seven hundred thousand dollars tonight out of, um, accounts that for people, what do I want to say? Those employees aren't working. We should pay for the whole thing. We still have the four point nine million dollars from the town in the health insurance trust fund. We should pay for the whole thing. We should expedite it. We should get it done.
I agree, Tom. Thank you, Tom.
Be a problem.
I think we should.
I agree.
And we could afford the consultant, though. I mean.
We, we can.
We can. We could afford the consult. I mean, the mayor, they're going to cover installation, but I mean, there's a lot of other costs too. I think we do need someone to lay all that out.
I don't think we should make the PTA drain all their money that they work so hard for, for this project. I don't. We should pay for the whole thing. We have the funds.
I agree, so.
Can we bring, can the board put, um, like a final dollar amount on that this evening, whether it be the sixty-three thousand or the seventy thousand or a cap, and then we can bring transfers to the board relative to operational lines, so that we can secure the fund.
I, I'd say we do a cap this way.
I'd say we cap it at eighty, because we're not sure what.
Eighty-five, but, okay.
Well, well, I was just, I was trying to, I was trying to be, I say, because if it's sixty-three on the thing, we're giving fifteen with the consulting and we're not sure with the, so, but if you feel, if you feel the eighty-five is thing, I'm, I'm fair with that, because I think this year and with the amount of, with the amount of time that it's taken, and I'd rather pay more for a consultant that we're gonna be able to expedite his work and get it done. Because I don't want to see this sit for two years.
Yeah. I, I, I think the cap's a good idea. And we're not saying we have to spend it, right? But we, we could. This way, it doesn't have to come back and forth to us.
I agree.
Okay, um.
Jack wants to say something.
Oh, go ahead, Jack.
Are there any other schools in need of a playground? Or is this the last one? Because if we're gonna pay for this one, we have to look ahead. Now, are there any other schools we're gonna have to pay for?
I can assume Tuttle may come to us with improvements as well.
Yep, I would agree.
So I think that would be fair to say.
I, I missed the amount because I was frozen. Was it eighty-five?
Eighty-five. Cap at eighty-five.
Okay. And is that, just out of curiosity?
Eighty-five dollars, Paul. I saw you raise your eyebrows. Everybody's getting a jump rope, you know?
Is that including like ground cover and things of that, or is ground like?
It's a cap.
For the entire project?
I, I, I think so.
Okay. Alright, I just want to make sure that I, that I have a good understanding.
So that would include the consultant in that cap as well.
Okay.
Michelle, you want to do the Durham invoices in the regular meeting and we'll, we'll adjourn this?
Um, sorry, I'm sorry, really quick. And just to be clear, and that would be to not touch their, um, their earmarked funds as well.
That's right.
That was an understanding.
Okay.
Go party, Paul.
You're pardoned.
Um. There was, am I frozen?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, Tommy, they're on the regular agenda anyway, so if you want to just move on to substitute pay and then we'll go into the regular meeting quick.
That's good. Okay, anybody, any, uh, what's going on with substitute pay?
So at the last meeting, we talked about, um, that we had increased, the board had approved increasing substitute pay through the end of December. And that we would take a look at the cost to continue that increase in pay for the remainder of the year. And based on our vacancy rate, rate and our fill rate every day, that would cost us about an additional sixty-five thousand dollars to maintain the current subrate. Um, those subs are really important. Our principals are utilizing them based on, um, the, the situation that we're in. And I think that our operational budget can support, um, holding on and maintaining to that increase in sub-rate pay through the remainder of the school year.
Alright. Any questions?
I had one other thing, Tom, under any other business, which was the transportation RFP. Melissa had sent out an email to the board saying that a hard copy was available in our office. That was the RFP that Attorney Askloff reviewed at the last meeting in executive session. Um, I'll be asking to add that tonight to the board agenda for approval. I don't, I didn't get any questions and nobody came in to flip through the hard copy, so I'm assuming the overview that the attorney gave in executive session was sufficient. And we'd really like to get that, um, approved, so we can finalize it and put it out to bid in a timely manner to be able to make a transition should another vendor be selected.
Alright, anybody, if no one has anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Alright, I am going to call to order this evening's meeting for December twenty-second. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. Melissa, flag, please. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. Tia DePalma.
Here.
Jennifer Delongo.
Here.
Lisa Jurecy Anastasio.
Here.
Tom Hennessy.
I'm here.
Tom Murtaugh.
Here.
Mary Ann Pellegrino.
Here.
Erica Santiago.
Here.
Jack Stacy.
Here.
And Michelle DeLucio.
Here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. So, good evening, everyone.
Before we go, can I just request a moment of silence, uh, loss of the mayor's father and your father-in-law?
Oh, absolutely, Jack. Thank you.
So ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, good evening. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy, lucky season. The country is currently coming down, um, I don't know. Well, softening the spike is the term I believe I heard earlier this evening for COVID, COVID cases following Thanksgiving. So I do ask that, you know, everyone remain vigilant in your efforts against spreading the pandemic. It is our hope that we can continue to offer our families the choice of full in-person or full remote with live instruction once we return from break. As a district, we are doing what we can to mitigate transmission. And I have been assured that as of yet, we have not reported a positive case as a result of in-school transmission. So again, I'd like to thank all the staff, students, as well as families for their efforts. So I'm sure that many of you have seen the recent health reports and news articles showing little differential in the COVID cases in Connecticut between instruction modalities. Um, both full in-person and full remote have a less than point zero one difference in positive cases. Um, with actually the highest percentage of cases reported is among hybrid districts. Um, I remind you that you can view the COVID dashboard on our district website to monitor the number of cases we have experienced thus far in the district. And I'd just like to say, stay safe and stay healthy. And that's all I have for our last meeting of the year. Which brings me to correspondence, which has, should be, Melissa's correspondence been loaded to the drive for the public and board members?
Uh, yes, I will upload it onto, uh, for public access right after the meeting.
Great, perfect. So that brings us to subcommittee reports.
Hi.
Ms. Hall.
I'm gonna, um, report that we are underway, setting, um, trying to get negotiations underway for the para-professionals and custodians. We have been making, um, you know, requests to set dates, et cetera, and that hopefully will soon happen. I think there's been some changes with the union, so it's been a little bit of an issue. The other, um, report I'd like to give is that we are, um, near, um, setting up, um, a board, um, negotiations, um, team to finish the, uh, chief of finance, if I could say that, if I'm saying that correctly, and with, um, Michelle would be on that committee myself. And hopefully, um, Mr. Hennessy can, um, will be able to join us for that as well. And I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle, it's Erica. Um, I just wanted to update on community outreach. I received, um, a number of calls from, um, families. They were very happy with the breakfast and lunch pickup from yesterday and today. I think today was the last day. Um, they were very grateful for the, um, the ten days of breakfast and lunch that was supplied through Sudexo from our lunch program um, for the winter break. Um, I actually had a lot of people saying how grateful they were and that, um, that they couldn't believe the, the amount of food that they did receive. And then, um, also that I received an email, which I did forward to both you and Erica, um, just reiterated in the conversation that I had with the mayor um, in regards to, um, the Farrar playground, because he also had, um, uh, I guess conversations with families, um, because they were, you know, asking, asking for his support as well for the Farrar playground, so.
Thank you. Uh, Jack, yes, Jack.
So, um, I noticed on the agenda that, um, the superintendent has an athletics update, so I'm not gonna say too much, other than that I spoke with the athletic director today. Um, he, like myself, is an eternal optimist and is hoping for the best. Uh, but it just seems like everything is pretty much at a standstill right now. So, uh, again, not familiar with what Erica's gonna talk about, but I think that's good enough for right now for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, Lisa, buildings and grounds?
Um, just a little bit piggyback on what Jack said. Um, regarding, um, athletic director, Anthony gave me an update of the last, um, routineer would be paid the first of year. And, um, update regarding, um, public works, um, due to the weather, the department will be trained in the spring on how to use the grooming and the new equipment for the field. Um, and I, they, they were really happy. Look forward to, um, to begin the process. Just actually no time to see issue. Um, regarding, um, Farrar, uh, full, full, full update has already been given. Regarding the overall, um, schools, regarding cleaning, um, everyone seems to be very happy, very pleased, parents, um, staff, um, no, no concerns at this point regarding that. And everyone's really happy with all the buildings. Other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, did we have anything, anything on policy? Finance, Tommy, you're with us every week, we get a full update.
All set.
Okay. And you're good with policy, right, Erica?
Nothing on policy. I'm not sure if you want to do a workshop.
We do to address the 9,000 series that has to get taken care of.
Yes.
All right. All right, so at this time, if we are finished with subcommittee reports, I'm going to turn it over to superintendent.
Thank you, Michelle. Erica, thank you for mentioning about the food distribution with the holiday packs. While they're tallying sort of the the final numbers, I do know that just under 1,000 were delivered at the high school for 1,000 families. So it was a huge undertaking and task for Sedexo, but I think our community is really appreciative. In terms of vaccination, we had a call with East Shore Health Department today, and those individuals that will be part of Phase 1A will be vaccinated next week at two locations, Madison Town Campus Gym and Branford High School. This will include our East Haven School nurses, because they will then in turn be part of our district vaccination for those individuals working in a public school setting. And that will be Phase 1B. And while we don't have the logistics fully worked out, it will most likely take place at East Haven High School. And as we work with East Shore to plan that further, I will provide updates as more detail becomes available. In response to a question that a board member had, it will be strongly recommended and encouraged that individuals continue to wear masks even after they are vaccinated. Connecticut is expanding access to COVID testing for educators. Community Health Center, CHC, is providing expedited COVID testing for educators. So any staff that presents an ID will get priority testing. And if they use the walk-up lane and identify themselves upon arrival, they will be moved to the front of the line. And this priority testing will be offered until 4:00 PM at all of the CHC COVID testing locations in the state. And starting today, hours have been extended to 5:00 PM at the Waterbury, Middletown, New London, and Norwalk sites. So all CHC testing sites will have priority access for educators. We have conducted some binax now tests. We've done just under 10 between staff and students. This is the quick test that's being done by our Fairhaven Community Health Center staff located in our school buildings. Now, both at the JMMs and high school campus, the school-based health center are currently administering this test not only to students, but also staff in a private and confidential located location outside of the schools for any symptomatic individual. And this also does now include staff. I'm sure many of you have seen the new quarantine guidelines in accordance with the guidance from the CDC and the Connecticut Department of Public Health, as well as East Shore Health Department. Our, our district is now quarantining any individual considered to be a close contact for 10 days. This is a reduction to the 14-day quarantine period that we had previously been practicing since the beginning of the school year. Any individual that was already in quarantine will adhere to the 14 days. And anyone as of Friday, December 18th, is now adhering to the 10-day quarantine. In accordance with the local health department recommendation, any individual in quarantine will not be permitted to return to school, even with a negative test result, until the full 10 days of the quarantine period have been completed and the individual remains symptom-free. So this is a really exciting time of year, as our students are anxiously awaiting to hear back from colleges and receive their acceptance letters. While most will not hear until January or February, I am really happy and pleased to announce that East Haven High School senior Om Patel has received notification that he's been accepted to Harvard. We'd like to congratulate him on this amazing accomplishment, and we will keep the board and our community updated on other acceptances of students as they're notified over the couple months. So congratulations to Om and his acceptance to Harvard. So East Haven District is among few districts in the state that has almost entirely stayed open during the school year, offering parents the choice of sending their children to school or opting for remote learning. And we think that this is an exceptional accomplishment under these very difficult and changing circumstances. It means that we've kept many of our students learning and thriving in the classroom and online, while maintaining health and safety environments in school and virtually. And I think all of us collectively, as an educational community and community at large, should take pride in that. Our ability to stay open will, has depended really on everyone and will continue to depend on everyone and those who have risen to the challenge of taking all of the necessary precautions to keep their families and by extension, our community, safe. And finally, just like to say best wishes to our educational community, the board, all of our faculty and staff, students and their families for a happy holiday season and a healthy and joyful new year.
Thank you, Erica. Oh, and should we announce that we got notification that Commissioner Cardona has been selected to President-elect Biden's Cabinet for Secretary of Education?
Yes, so our current Connecticut Commissioner has been, not officially appointed, but I hear that it's coming very soon to President Biden's Cabinet as the Secretary of Education. And I don't think there's any better choice. Commissioner Cardona is an amazing educator and individual, and our nation is in great hands with him leading the way.
Yeah, I just got notification from CAE like an hour ago.
You did, yeah. It's exciting news. And we're really happy and proud of Connecticut and looking forward to the amazing accomplishments that we're going to make, not only as a state, but as a nation, under his leadership.
Great, okay.
Michelle, while we're
Um, now, let's see, I have, we have the athletic update. Erica, did you want Anthony to give that?
Yes, I think Jack was making a comment and he might have been muted.
I was. While we're doing congratulatory, congratulations to everyone. How about a congratulations to the newest member of the board, who was Person of the Week this past week in the East Haven Courier? So congratulations to Tom Murtaugh.
Person of the Week, congratulations.
Person of the Week.
So I'm a bit out of the loop, but.
Congratulations.
Okay, all right, so, moving on, congratulations, Tom. You want Anthony to give the athletic update? Yes?
Yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Verderan?
All right, thank you, Ms. DeLucio. Mr. Stacy pretty much hit it on the head. We're at a standstill. We had a meeting today, again, with Department of Health. Numbers are slowly declining, which is good. And we're just waiting to see how this goes when we come back from break. And once we have the numbers, we'll establish a baseline of where we're looking to be at in order to to start conditioning again, and we'll present to you at that time.
Okay. So status quo for now, all right. Jen?
Myself, hello, everybody. Thank you so much for everything. I wanted to thank the many educators and and community members who have shown their dedication to supporting our students this year. Our families are also to be commended for their efforts to partner with us. I'm sending all of our community the sincerest wishes for a light-filled holiday season and a wonderful 2021. As outlined in the agenda, I have a couple of items I wish to discuss this evening. One is the Black and Latino Studies course and a call for questions regarding East Haven pre-K. So first, an update on the Black and Latino Studies course. That in the last few years, the Connecticut Council for the Social Studies, the State Education Resource Center, and a number of other stakeholder groups have been advocating for the inclusion of a Black and Latino Studies course at the high school level. Focus groups from across the state, representing a wide variety of stakeholders, were held by CERC during the spring of last year. And these groups developed a statewide curriculum. This was designed to explore topics inclusive of Connecticut students from diverse backgrounds. Legislation was crafted and recently re-announced by Governor Ned Lamont, as it is expected that the State Board of Education will pass the statewide and approve the statewide commission in mid-January or honor before the 2022 school year. After the State Board of Education approves the statewide curriculum, East Haven Public Schools will be reaching out for some feedback from families and stakeholders. But legislation outlines that districts are required to offer the course in the 2022 school year, although they may offer the course earlier than that. And I'm happy to announce that our instructional team is prepared to offer the course to students as an elective in the 2021, 2022 school year. We want to make sure this initiative is inclusive of our existing efforts to build on our scope and sequence that is representative of all of our students, including third-grade curriculum that discusses cultures across Connecticut, our fifth-grade curriculum, developing an understanding of the ways different histories leave out and and omit certain stories, as well as our comprehensive 612 curriculum led by Joseph Marangell, who also presented at recent Curriculum Advisory Council. This topic will also be on the agenda for the January Curriculum Advisory Council meeting, so I encourage anybody who is curious to attend if they are interested. And again, please address any questions that you have to me or Joe Marangell, our 612 Social Studies Instructional Leader. I'm also pleased to announce that in recent review of outcomes in pre-K programming, we've noted that specialized programming for students is resulting in closing skill gaps and supporting student integration into classes with their typical peers. Our grant and tuition-funded East Haven pre-K programs are also helping students engage with their peers socially, develop vocabulary, provide structure, routine, and academic supports while measuring student outcomes through monitoring. In a forthcoming meeting in the 2021 calendar year, Sarah Colette from the Office of People's Services will be presenting some more detailed information on these outcomes. And we're going to be pleased to provide the board with updates regarding these programs. But at this time, in preparation of that, I'd be welcoming board members and community members to address any questions that they may have about our pre-K programs via email to me, jmurhe@easthaven.k12.cte.us, and please use the subject line, "East Haven Pre-K Questions." And then finally, our recent Curriculum Advisory Council held on the 8th of December was a success. And we are excited that we had family, teacher, and administrative representatives who discussed textbook adoption protocols and processes for curriculum development and instructional improvement. We will be linking slides to this report if anybody's interested in taking a peek if, for those that are reading or viewing online. And those can also be, will be linked to our curriculum and instruction website. And again, I wish the board and all of your families a light-filled and love-filled holiday season.
Thank, thank you, Jen. I think next up, we have approval of meeting minutes. And then after that approval of consent agenda, I just have a quick question. On the consent agenda for the invoices, are the Durham Transportation invoices on that? And if so, we should move that to the end of the meeting, then, the consent agenda? Lynn, are they on that?
We did them separately.
Did them separately, perfectly, okay, great. All right, so then I am going to go to item four, approval of meeting minutes. So I have a motion to approve the minutes for special meeting on December 8th, 2020.
Michelle? Erica Santiago? I'd like to make a motion to approve this special meeting minutes for December 8th, did you say?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, special, special meeting minutes, December 8th, 2020.
Mary Ann Pellegrino, I will second it.
Okay, motion by Erica, seconded by Mary. I'm gonna ask, does anybody have any questions about the meeting minutes? I'm not going to do roll call for comments and questions on minutes. So if not, then I'm gonna ask for, I guess, a roll call vote. Okay. For approval.
Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
No. No, did you get me, no?
No, yeah, okay. Uh, Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucio?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to approval of the consent agenda. So we have approval of invoices for fiscal year 2020, 2021 in the amount of $536,474.08. And we have the approval of purchase orders over $7,000. As discussed in finance, did anybody need any, any type of clarifier before we ask for a motion? If not, then I will request a motion at this time.
Erica Santiago, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Jack Stacy, I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Ms. Santiago, seconded by Mr. Stacy. At this time, Melissa, could you do a roll call vote for the consent agenda, please?
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
No.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucio?
Yes. Motion carries.
Sorry, I muted myself and then said it, motion carries.
All right, so that brings us to the audience of citizens portion of this evening. I remind for everyone to please adhere to the Board of Ed's policy on public address and hopefully that what is discussed falls under the board jurisdiction, as noted in the policy. Melissa, do you want to go ahead and take, pick over there?
Yes, so anyone who is in the attendees, if you would like to speak, just use the raise your hand option, and then I will call on you to speak. Okay. Lorena, I will allow you to talk now.
Hi, good evening, members of the Board of Education. And Melissa, how are you? I am, I'm gonna thank all of you for
You know, just before you, Lorena, before you get started, can you just do your name and address? I know it's a formality, but we need it.
I forgot, thanks. Lorena Venegas, and my address is 73 George Street.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank all of you for being present tonight at the meeting. It's really important as a parent that, you know, there, our vote really matters and counts. So I want to encourage all of you to continue to be responsive to parents' emails and phone calls and messages and whatever else that we do. It's really important that when I reach out and I leave a voicemail, that I get a call back, that I get acknowledgement, and I think other parents feel the same way, too. I want to let you know that in the beginning in August, I gave public comment that I put my children's in in person, because I know the need for connection, not only social, emotional, but also the learning happens when you, in a group setting, is dynamic. And that's what parents are looking for, right? Dynamic learning. And that's why tonight, I just wanted to present what, to you, a very short wish list that I want to put on so that we can start working on January and the months to come. So number one on my wish list is I want to make sure that we work on making remote better. And one example is music instruction. I wrote this as an email to all of you about two or three months ago, but I didn't get a lot of movement on it. But we have parents who invested in musical instruments. Some of them are still paying for those through the vendors. Some of them actually just turn them in, just not to have a bill anymore. But there are platforms where we can be doing remote learning of music. And you know how much music instruction is connected to math and logic? So I really would encourage our district to to move towards that and give parents an option for remote musical instruction in the coming year. I know that in the pandemic, you know, we had to, you had to develop new tools. So I appreciate the website with the new resources, including the COVID tracker, the multilingual and the curriculum resources. We need that as parents because those are extra tools that help us communicate with our teachers. So I want to thank you for that. And earlier on in the year, I also wrote about communication and how important it is. But this, tonight, I want to tie it into advocacy. Because the uncertainty that we felt this year, we don't know the waves that are coming and the changes that are coming in school funding might impact our town. So so much advocacy, if all of you can do at all levels, with the state rep, in your own political parties, right there as a group, you can be vocal and heartfelt, too. I would love to see all of you work at different levels to push East Haven to a new level. So that's what I want to challenge you at my little wish list tonight. I also want to include and value our staff that we have. They're amazing. And just put a little footnote that our parents do need an adjustment of salaries. And our paraprofessionals, I did some homework doing the hourly rates across shoreline towns. And I know we have a range, but I think we can do better because these people are my neighbors. These people I shop with, it stop and shop, and they really care about children. And making a career ladder for them here is a good investment. Lastly, I just want to say that as long as I've been coming to these meetings since 2015, Farrar playground has been an issue. So I want to make sure that tonight that we pass it, that we pass a full funding for these families. We've had two classes of students that never got a playground. And although my children are not there, our town's children do deserve it. So anything you could do to make that playground happen tonight, I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorena. Melissa, do we have any more?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Just hit the raise your hand option. Okay, it looks like that is it, and there's no one else.
That will conclude our Audience of Citizens portion for this evening. So that will bring us to new business. And first, we'll go to 7.1, Discussion and Possible Action on Hires, Rehires, and Stipends.
So Tia De Palma, I'd like to make a motion to accept the list of hires and rehires.
Erica Santiago, I'd like to second it.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to open up for question, comment, starting with Ms. De Palma, who made the motion. Any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Santiago?
None, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stacy?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Murdaugh? Any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Delongo?
No.
Ms. Pellegrino?
No questions.
Ms. Geraci Anastasio?
I can't get back on, so. No.
Okay, no, okay. Tommy, any questions or comments?
I'm good, thank you.
I think I hit everybody. So then, at this time, Melissa, I'm going to go ahead and ask you to do a roll call vote.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to 7.2, Discussion and Possible Action on the Farrar Playground. As discussed in subcommittee, this would be to approve or discussion impossible action on the approval of an $85,000 cap for the Farrar Playground. Do you have a motion?
Yep, Michelle, Erica Santiago, I'd like to make a motion to approve the $85,000 cap for Farrar's Playground.
Do you have a second?
Tia De Palma?
No. I second.
I'm sorry, I heard everybody at once. Who do we have for a second?
Tia De Palma, second, but I think Jen seconded it as well. I don't, you can, it doesn't matter.
I think actually Jen, Lisa, and you did it once, so I don't, I don't think, yeah, I think we could just go alphabetical. We'll go with Tia. There you go, D E. All right, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and ask for comments, questions, starting with according to Robert's rules, for the individual who made the motion. So Erica, questions or comments?
No questions. I'd just like to comment and say that I appreciate the support on this motion, and that's all.
Okay, Tia?
No comments. I'm happy to put this forward.
Lisa?
No, I'm looking forward to it. No comment.
Great. Jen?
No comments.
Marian?
Me? Did you say Marian?
Marian.
No comments.
Okay. Tommy?
No comment, thank you.
Jack?
No questions but a comment. I just want to thank all of those people who are so passionate tonight about this and each of the individuals who gave their thoughts. They were quite good, and I'm glad we can do this.
Tom?
No comment.
I think, I believe, again, I got everyone. So Melissa, if you could do a roll call vote to approve the $85,000 cap towards the Farrar Playground project.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Great. Brings us to 7.3, Discussion and Possible Action on Approval of the Durham Transportation Invoices. I know we did not get a chance to discuss this in subcommittee. So we, I know that this was asked for a while back to ensure, I don't know, we were looking into whether we were paying by route, by bus, just due to, you know, different number of buses being used each month. Opening up to you, Erica, for any other further description on this, what we found.
Yeah, so this was in response to the question regarding the invoices and the number of buses that were being used on a daily basis. So over the past couple of weeks, we worked with Durham School Transportation Services to come up with a spreadsheet of the actual vehicles and the days that they were in service by Durham for each one of the month, as well as the hours per day that they were used and the type of equipment, whether it was a big bus or a minibus. And we also put the bus number and description in addition to the route number so that we had an accurate accounting of how many buses were out on each route each day and the total number of days used during that month. And so that that data then matched the Durham invoices that were submitted for September, October, and November.
Thank you for the clarification. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Erica Santiago, I make a motion to approve the Durham invoices.
Tia De Palma, I second.
Okay, so at this time, we'll open up for questions and comments on Durham Transportation Invoices. And I will start with Mrs. Santiago. Questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Ms. De Palma?
None, thank you.
Ms. Geraci Anastasio?
No, thank you.
And Ms. Delongo?
No, thank you.
Tom Murdaugh?
No, thank you.
Mr. Stacy?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Ms. Pellegrino?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Tommy, I saved you for last. Mr. Hennessy?
Were there any changes to those original invoices? Or are they verified to be accurate?
No, there were.
Lynn, do you mind giving the background on this? Erica, can you answer this, or would you like to have Lynn?
I was just going to say there were changes. One invoice went up, one invoice went down. But Lynn has the details of the changes.
I don't need, I don't need the details. I just want to know, there were changes?
Minimal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
Okay. Ms. Bouvier, was there anything that stood out at all in the changes? You're muted.
I'm very sorry.
I do it all the time.
It was basically the differences were in the number of hours the buses we were being charged for. We only have two eight-hour buses, and we have 14 six-hour buses. So once we got that all straightened out, it's very straightforward exactly how much they're charging us because they gave us the spreadsheet with all the bus routes, the days, the hours, and the number of days used. We just have to make sure we keep track of when all the other schools close because there have been multiple school closures on the bills that where we have our kids going out of district.
That's a good point. Thank you very much. All right, so if no questions or any other questions or comments at this time, and I'm going to go ahead and ask Melissa to do a roll call vote to approve the Durham Transportation Invoices.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo? Jennifer Delongo? I'll keep going. Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Thank you. And Michelle DeLucia? Okay, all in favor, motion carries.
Okay, at this time, I'm going back. Any other business that's going to come before this evening?
Yes, can I make a request to add 7.4? Request for disposal of items at East Haven Academy. I'd like to add that to the agenda.
Tia De Palma, I make a motion that we add 7.4 to the agenda.
Jack Stacy, I'll second.
Okay, so agenda item 7.4, Discussion and Possible Approval of Disposal of Items as listed in the board packet for the East Haven Academy. If anyone has any clarifier questions, now.
You got to vote on adding.
That's why I'm otherwise.
You got to vote on adding.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're right, Tommy. Okay. So why don't we go ahead and just do a roll call vote on adding it? Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo? Lisa Geraci?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucia?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor.
Okay, so now it brings us to 7.4, Discussion and Possible Action, the Approval of Disposal of Items Listed for East Haven Academy. Am I correct? Did I get that correct? Erica, is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
It's 2022 chair, 22 tables, 17 chairs, and two bookcases that are broken and damaged.
Okay. So at this time, is anyone going to have any questions or comments? No, because I'm not going to go ahead and go do the roll call for this. All right, Melissa, I'm just going to ask you to go ahead and roll call for a vote.
I have to make the motion now.
Oh my God, I'm so, I'm just.
I'm going to make a motion to dispose, that we take action and dispose of the items listed on file.
Okay, yeah.
Marian Pellegrino, I'll second that.
I think because I thought we had a motion before we added it, okay? All right, all right, so the motion. Melissa, you want to go ahead and do a roll call vote?
Yes. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Yes, okay. All right. Was there anything else that needed to be added for this evening?
Can I add 7.5, Discussion and Possible Approval of the Transportation RFP?
A motion to add 7.5 to the agenda.
Second, Erica Santiago.
Okay, Melissa, we just do a roll call to add 7.5 to the agenda?
Yep, all right. Tia De Palma?
To the agenda?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio? I'll come back. Tom Hennessy?
No, she's.
No.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, Tom Hennessy, no?
No.
Okay. Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucia?
Yes.
Okay. Eight in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so that brings us to 7.5, Discussion and Possible Action on Approval of the Transportation RFP to go out to bid. Does anybody have any clarifier questions before or a motion? Or everyone pretty much knows what we're talking about. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Erica Santiago, I make a motion for the Transportation RFP to go out to bid.
Tia De Palma, I second that.
All right. This time, anybody have any questions or comments? Or do a roll call for questions or comments? Jack?
I'm good.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, Erica, you made the motion correct. So I'm going to have to say, Erica, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Tia?
Oh, thank you.
Jack?
I'm good, thank you.
Tom?
No, thank you.
Okay, Marian?
I just want to comment that I thought that the woman who gave the overview of this proposal was extremely clear and extremely thorough and much, much more so, I think, than me trying to wade through reading it. I really understood what she was talking about, and I felt, I felt very clear on what she was saying. And I just wanted to make that as a comment.
Great, thank you, Marian. Marian, Jen?
No, thank you.
Lisa?
No, thank you.
Tommy?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So no questions or comments? Melissa, I'm going to ask you to do a roll call vote on Approval of the Transportation RFP Going Out to Bid.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo? Jennifer Delongo? It's, she's trying. I'll come back. Lisa Geraci Anastasio? Jennifer Delongo? I saw you. Okay. Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of our meeting discussion concerning future agenda items. I would just like to say, going forward, we only really need to post our agenda 24 hours prior to the meeting, so if we know we're going to add agenda items um, within that period, I say we just admit a revised agenda, so rather than just having to verbally add them that evening. If we know within 24 hours of the start of the meeting at seven o'clock, for instance, on a Monday night, we should be able to revise the agenda, so I can make sure I get them correct, and that's.
That's a good idea, Michelle.
I like that idea, too.
Yeah, I know there's emergencies and I think that's a, a good way to look at it.
Quick comment. Next meeting, um, says, uh, 1/21/2020. I, I think we're meeting in 2021. And I'm wishing everyone a joyous New Year.
And I believe we are meeting. It's 21st as well.
It's January 12th, right?
Melissa, I'd just like to add something. I had my hand up earlier when Jen was speaking.
Yeah, we got a little play on numbers here.
Yeah.
Oh, you're really really darkly, sorry.
Could we review the meeting, please?
Okay. Let me know when I can talk myself.
Yeah, I mean, you have.
I can't really hear you. I have my hands. Oh, my gosh.
Did you have something for the?
I just wanted to.
Feature agenda item?
I just wanted to cut, no, you cut me off before. I was trying to make it, I wanted to thank Jenna on her, her, the new studies brought to the district, and I was stating that other districts are introducing implicit bias courses. I thought that was something that we could look toward, toward the future of. But you, you passed it on, which is fine, but I just want to commend her, and I think it's wonderful. And there's, there's, it's, we're looking towards a new path, and I, I think it's a positive way, and there's other studies that we can look into, and I just wanted to share that with her, but it's fine. I can email her and address it later, but.
I didn't know you were trying to speak then. I must not have seen you.
Thank you, Lisa.
We gotta like try to make sure we use our little.
No, I had an emergency. I apologize being in the car. My apologies. I had to leave for a minute, too, and I had to come back. Sorry about that.
Right, so did anyone else want to come up with any, talk about any future agenda items?
Yes. Michelle, I'd like to, um, see if we can get a Board of Education workshop on the calendar for next week and, um, take poll of the board to see if, you know, the 30th at 5:30 works.
Works for me. Well, Melissa, if you could just send out a poll, little quick survey.
Budget, budget workshop for, um, the presentation of the 21.
Time of year. Sorry, I forgot.
2122 budget.
Like Chris. This for us?
Can I get a clarification?
Erica, do you?
Yes, I have a, um, future agenda item. Um, I just kind of wanted to piggyback to, um, for, uh, Jen, I didn't get an opportunity to speak, um, in the Assistant Superintendent's report as well, um, with the Black and Latino study courses. Um, can you also in our, maybe in our next meeting, can you give us our, um, the ratio that we have for our Black and Latino students based for the, um, for the district? I kind of think that maybe we should also look at our, um, our district calendar. And because we're gonna be, um, collaborating with more of, um, a Black and Latino, um, you know, the diversity within our district, I want to look at our calendar also. With my kids also being Hispanic, I think we should start incorporating more diverse, um, holidays as well, like Three Kings, which is in our, in a lot of, um, surrounding towns. I think it'll be important for many families because I think we do have a very prominent Hispanic, um, families in our, in our town, so.
That's definitely a great idea.
So if we can look at our calendar for that as well.
I'm hoping to also have a calendar to, to at least review, um, prior to the, one of the January board meetings, so that's.
And you do have our next, our actual next meeting is January 12th, right? Am I correct? January 12th?
No.
At, and we have a finance meeting at 6:30. I just want to check, make sure my calendar.
Yeah, so.
I was dyslexic. I had the 21st.
I will.
No, it's.
I'll note in the.
Who's noting what? I have, if you look at the, today's agenda, it says 1/21.
Yeah, it's a mistake. It looked like it should be 12. Somebody played with numbers at all. Also said 2020. So, yeah, it's January 12th.
I'm not dyslexic. I got it.
No, just, just me.
Before we disperse, don't we have to approve the subpay rates that we discussed in the finance meeting?
Did we have, is that an agenda item? Or was that on the stipends? Was it listed under the stipends?
No, we had talked about it in the finance subcommittee meeting, but I believe we need to vote on the extension of the subpay rates for the remainder of the school year.
Okay, all right, so we didn't, we didn't motion to adjourn, okay?
So that would be, so we have to, um, make a motion to add 7.6, I believe?
Yes.
Discussion impossible action on the continuation of the current subpay.
Okay, so I make a motion to add, um, 7.6.
Tia De Palma, I second.
All right, so we have 7.6, um, discussion and possible action on approval of continuing the substitute pay rate going into 2021. Again, this is what I was saying, this, we had to know this was coming before seven o'clock last night. Um, all right, so at this time, if there's no other comments or questions, I'm gonna just ask that, uh, Melissa, do a roll call vote.
Um, so I'm gonna do the roll call vote to add it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yeah.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasio?
Yeah.
Tom Hennessy?
No.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes.
Okay. Eight in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so that brings us, where are we at? Seven?
So I make a motion.
I lost track of the.
Can I make a motion that we add, I mean, that we, um, continue the pay rate for subpay?
Yeah. And I will second that motion, Mary Ann Pellegrino.
Okay. All right, any, if there's no questions or comments, again, Melissa, I'm gonna ask for you to roll call vote for, I, I think it's seven point, I want to say six?
Yep.
The discussion and possible action on continuing the subpay rate for 2021. Am I right with that 7.6? All right. Great, go ahead, Melissa, roll call.
Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yeah.
The Jeracy Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
No.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucia?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so I think we already all gone over our future agenda items. We have verified that our next future meeting is January 12th, 2021, at 6:30 for finance. Regular meeting will be at 7:00 PM. If any of the subcommittees would like to meet before that, please, uh, let Melissa and myself and the superintendent know, if anything pops up. But that's all I have. I have a motion to adjourn.
Tia De Palma, motion to adjourn.
Mary Ann Pellegrino, second the motion to adjourn.
Meaning adjourned. Happy holidays, guys.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Enjoy this New Year.
Happy holidays.
Happy New Year.
2021.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming, all of those in attendance today.
Thank you.
Bye, Jen, thank you.
Thank you.